At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service, all at a fair price. We do what we say and we stand by our work. A&amp;A Paving brings you two decades worth of solid asphalt paving experience and a solid reputation in the pavement construction, repair, and maintenance industry. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944. Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis
Meeting to order, Monday, October 5th, 2015, for the Selectmen's meeting. I'd first invite you all to join us in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any announcements from the Board of Selectmen of the Town Interest Office?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, now we have some time for public comment. If anyone has public comment they can make on an issue that is not on our agenda this evening, please come forward.
An issue that's not on our agenda, so that means I can't speak to an article that you may be discussing later?
Well, again, I'll reiterate about our discussion on recommendations for the articles. This is a time for the Board to have discussion on those articles, the articles that we discussed at town meeting, but it's just a chance for the Board to have discussion about what our recommendations are on articles. So I won't be having public comments, so I will entertain public comment at this time if you'd like to make some public comment on one of those, because I will not be having public comment on those articles at that time. So this would be an opportunity if you wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Catherine Alder, Precinct 6. I'm a neighbor of Wind One Turbine, and I would like to comment on the proposed article which seeks to amend our wind energy bylaw. Falmouth does not have as-of-right sighting of turbines for good reasons that most people understand. I believe the town should go through a permitting process before erecting a turbine. The Planning Board agrees that the town and anyone else should go through a permitting process to erect a turbine. When we were denied this process after being assured that there would be one, we appealed. And three of the four sitting zoning board members also agreed and voted that the town should have a permitting process. A single fourth vote resulted in denial of our appeal. It took us years of litigation, but our right to this process was finally validated by the highest Massachusetts court, who agreed that the town must go through a permitting process. So I ask, and I know it's rhetorical, because I have never had a chance to have an active discussion with this sitting board, ever. So I hope that in your discussions later, that there might actually be a response to my comments and my questions. But I ask, what possible good reason is there for avoiding permit process? Last week, Mr. Patterson said that he felt more comfortable letting town meeting, as a legislative body, rather than a committee of citizens, tackle this problem. He said that he wasn't comfortable letting the zoning board of appeals tackle the problem. So I ask that you please explain to us exactly what is the problem with getting a permit? What problem does the amendment that you propose tackle? How does seeking to deny me and my neighbors due process tackle a problem? I think what you're saying is that being limited by a permit would cause a financial problem. Rather than tackle the financial problem brought about from negligent sighting, you will ask town meeting to allow you to continue to harm us, but only us, and only in that location. I find this a disgusting misuse of your authority, and I cannot understand, I do not understand, how you square this with your sense of civic duty. Please explain to me and the public how maximizing the profits from these turbines justifies denying us the equal protections of our bylaws. Thank you.
Just so there's no confusion, Kathy, before you leave, the article is a zoning article, and that the recommendation on that is done by the Planning Board. It is not a recommendation that comes in the warrant by the Board of Selectmen. And so the discussion about the recommendation will appear at the Planning Board meeting, and their recommendation will be what gets published in the warrant. I just wanted to be clear on, it's something that I had misunderstood, and wanted to make sure that everyone were aware that the discussion on that recommendation won't be appearing in this meeting tonight, because that is a Planning Board discussion on the recommendation.
So you will not discuss this article at all tonight?
It is not appropriate for our articles to discuss recommendations. There are certain articles that the Board of Selectmen makes recommendations, it's petition articles, it's articles from the Planning Board and other issues, but not on zoning articles. Zoning articles are specifically the recommendations from the Planning Board.
I understand. Thank you.
Brett.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Suso, Ms. Harper. My name is Brett Putnam. I'm a former Selectman, as you know, former chairman of the Board, but I do not come here to talk about politics. I come to share some information about Kiwanis. Kiwanis International is obviously an international organization dedicated to the health and welfare of children, and there are local chapters around the world. There is a new local chapter here in Falmouth. I'm the treasurer of said chapter, and I've presented you all previously or earlier this evening with some invitations. We're having a free, and it is free, pancake breakfast on October 17th, 7:00 to 10:00 a.m., at the North Falmouth Congregational Church, and you all, as well as all the public, are welcome to come, find out what Kiwanis is all about, and we would hope you would join us as well. So that's the extent of my announcement, and I thank you for your time and for the public's.
7:00 to 10:00?
7:00 to 10:00 a.m., October 17th, at the North Falmouth Congregational Church.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, our next item on the agenda is to approval minutes. First is from Monday, September 14th. This is our regular session, the public session.
I will move approval.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes of September 14th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Okay, next we have the meetings. I want to move next to the open session on Tuesday, September 22nd.
I will move approval.
My only question was, the capital improvement plan presentation actually occurred after we came back in at 9:00. And I think we had tabled that, so item number three is listed as happening between 2 and 4, but we actually moved it out of order. And so the only correction, just to, so we are being accurate in our timing, that that happened in the Selectmen's business after 9:00. So with that correction, we have a motion and a second with that objection?
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The ayes have it. All right, next are the executive session minutes from Tuesday, September 22nd. Item number one, this is litigation discussion wind turbine for the case involving Linda Okagawa. Any changes, corrections?
I will move approval of the executive session and not release.
We have a motion to approve and not release.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The ayes have it. And the final minutes are from executive session, sorry, last are the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. This is from Tuesday, September 22nd.
I'll move approval. Second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then the ayes have it. All right, Mr. Suso, we have the affirmation of the appointment of the Director of Information Technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you're well aware, we've been involved in a lengthy and rigorous search process for a successor to our longtime Director of Information Technology, and I'm very pleased to bring to the Board this evening a recommendation for the hiring of Valerie O'Connor. Valerie is the best candidate from among a number of qualified applicants for this position. Valerie will position us in the best way to move forward in the IT area going forward, and the Board has received a number of reports about information technology, transition plan, multiple discussions, and we look forward to that unfolding. That analysis was done, as you know, by a consultant from UMass Collins Center, and one that, a process that we have been on for well over a year, and is unfolding very well. Valerie is most recently serving as the Deputy Chief Information Officer of the Veterans Affairs Medical Center in Bedford, Massachusetts. She has a bachelor's degree in information science, as well as a master of management degree in addition to that, and a variety of experience, including in governmental settings, and I'm very pleased to recommend Valerie O'Connor's appointment to the Board for your consideration. Valerie is able to be with us here tonight, and I want to take the opportunity to introduce you to her as well. Don't know if you'd like Valerie to make a few comments. That would be the pleasure of the Board.
Just an order, I guess I'd rather have the vote first, and then Mr. Marianne to speak.
I will move approval for appointing Valerie O'Connor to the position of Director of IT.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Congratulations, Valerie.
Thank you.
Love to have you come and say a few words.
My first words are, thank you very much. I appreciate the affirmation, and I'm very excited to join the team on November 2nd. Falmouth is our new home. My husband retired from the Army after 37 years, and we decided New England and the Cape was where we wanted to be. We're near family, and this just kind of rounds out the entire picture for me, to be able to be a part of the community here and serve the town in this way. Thank you very much.
Kim, welcome.
Congratulations, you're welcome. I do also want to point out, Mr. Suso is in communication with, there are some internal candidates, and that process sounds like it's moving forward very well, of their understanding and acceptance of Ms. O'Connor's qualifications and enthusiasm for her appointment.
Thank you to members of the Board for that affirmation. Welcome, Valerie.
Next item are under summary of actions, administrative orders. We have a bunch of them which I will read. Please let me know if you want to hold any of them. The first is to approve a request to use funds from the Casino Wharf donations account to rebuild the steps at Falmouth Heights Beach. The second is to accept the recommendation of fair market resale by Falmouth Housing Trust staff of two Esker Place. Third is to establish value and to vote to declare surplus, 11.39 acres of Lot 1 Spring Bars Road, Assessors' Map 39. I actually will hold that one, I just want to make sure it's clear, everyone understands what's happening with that one.
Explanation.
Next is to accept donation from Republic Services in the amount of $1,500 to the Recreation Department donation account, and also to accept a donation from Republic Services in the amount of $1,500 to the Senior Center donation account, accept donation from the Seascape Association in the amount of $600 to the Beach Department donation account. Next item is to approve payment from the Recreation Department donation account in the amount of $1,816.28 to BSN Sports for a pair of football goals to be used at the Sandwich Road fields. The next is to approve a license agreement between the Town of Falmouth and the Falmouth Housing Trust for temporary construction access to land owned by the Town of Falmouth.
Okay.
Okay. And next is to authorize the Town Manager to seek additional services for radio system assessment for the Consolidated Communications Center. I think I have a little more explanation on that one also. And to authorize a letter of intent on solar power with EDIC. Do you want to have a little more discussion on that one, Ms. Marianne?
I think we're all set.
Great.
I just would like to make one comment, if I have any, on the donation from Republic Services. I think we should, if we have not already sent a letter thanking them, it's the first I've seen of a donation from Republic, and I think that's a pretty good thing, and we should be grateful for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so the items that have not been held, that we're going to be voting, are item A, item B, item D, item E, item F, item G, and item J.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval of those items. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, first item for a little discussion is to establish the value and vote to declare surplus. This is the Lot 1 Spring Bars Road, Assessors' Map. This is the first step in moving forward on declaring it surplus for the specific purposes as put forward by the article that the Town Meeting passed, when we went for community housing, recreation, and open space are the only things that we could declare surplus for.
That's what I thought would be helpful for the public at home, if they understood what surplus meant. It doesn't mean that you just discard it, that there's a certain value to it. So I don't know, Julian, if you wanted to comment on that.
Well, I'd be happy to make a couple of comments, and Heather may join me in that as well. This is a definitive legal step that the Board must take in order for you to, for us to be able to enact and operationalize the RFP request and directive that this Board has put in motion. In order to do that, we need to have a declaration of the surplus nature of that portion of property, so that it can be explored for use as affordable housing, consistent with the intentions identified, as Doug has noted by Town Meeting a while back, and in working with the CPC. And this is that important step. Heather, anything else?
Yeah, a couple things. One, there is an actual motion in your packet, and if you'd like, I can read it for you?
Yeah, it's right here.
That's preferable. And then what I'd ask the Board to do is, you can make the motion, but perhaps allow me later in the evening to announce the valuation. I know that's not in your packet. There was evaluation prepared that should have been in the packet. I want to make sure that we do declare the value. The motion does not specify what the value is, but it does say you will announce it this evening, and I want to make sure that gets done. So the revised, the proposed motion is to move to declare a surplus to the needs of the Town of Falmouth, certain town-owned property located on Spring Bars Road comprised of 11.3 acres, and to declare that the property is available for disposition, subject to the restriction that use of the property shall be restricted to community housing, open space, and our passive public recreation. The property is more particularly described as Lot 1 on a plan of land recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 635, page 29, and in the town's deed recorded with Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Book 24,617, page 69. The property is also shown on Assessors' Map 39, 15, 047001.
So moved?
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thanks, John.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Okay. The next item is to approve the license agreement between the Town of Falmouth and the Falmouth Housing Trust. This is for temporary construction access to land owned by the Town of Falmouth, located adjacent to property at One Chancery Lane. This is at Old Falmouth Hall. Any, do you want to make a few comments?
Hi, Annie Connolly, Executive Director of the Falmouth Housing Trust. This is just really sort of a bookkeeping item. We're going to need to have a construction fence. It will be on part of the town land, and that's really just because the property lines are so close to the actual structures over there. That's pretty normal in historic properties. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
It was my understanding that this was for parking? Is that correct, or is there some other?
No. There's something else.
This is just for construction.
This is just for the construction.
Construction of the project. We're going to, we're supposed to close on October 15th,
and we've already started the building permit process. So our goal is to have it weathered tight by the time the cold weather rolls in, so we're going to have to get moving.
So this is restriction access fencing to make sure that no one can get onto the lot to get in the way of the construction?
Yeah, and also to protect people, because it's, you know, it's a construction site.
Part of that fence has to go in town property.
Are you planning to have some type of area around the building for parking at some point? No?
We are, Mary Pat, we are.
Am I ahead of myself? Ahead of you?
Well, it depends. I think for tonight's discussion, we're a little, you're a little ahead of yourself, but it's something that we will be talking about sooner than later, and maybe before some other boards.
Yes, that would be true.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, comments? I entertain a motion to approve the license agreement between the Town of Falmouth and the Falmouth Housing Trust.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second from Ms. Marianne and Mr. Patterson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
Thanks, guys.
Both items done. We've got both of your items done.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last on the summary of actions is to authorize the Town Manager to seek additional services. Actually, we have two more left. No, just that one. Okay. To seek additional services for the radio system assessment for the Consolidated Communications Center. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You and the members of the Board may recall, we had a recent reports from the architect engaged to do the analysis of the police station and the fire station, as well as a report from consultant IXP on the telecommunications system. What we found is that we need some additional follow-up work in the telecommunications area to bring some additional information and confirmation to the Board, hopefully by your meeting on October 19th. And in order to do that, we need some additional technical and consulting services from IXP, for which I would ask the Board's concurrence, it would be in the amount of an additional $7,500. Those funds are set aside and available, but I would ask for the Board's support, so we can give you as definitive of information as possible to make the important decision that lies ahead.
Any other questions from the Board?
I'll make the motion to authorize the Town Manager to seek additional services for radio system assessment for the Consolidated Communications Center.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None?
Thank you.
The ayes have it. We're moving on to some special events. We have two recurring events that are both recommended. The first is the Candlelight Vigil. This is held by the Cape Cod Center for Women. The event is scheduled for Friday, October 16th, with the rain date of October 23rd, at the Hall at Pegunin Park. The event running from 7:00 to 8:30. And our other event is from Claire Connolly. This is a rosary rally at Pegunin Park on Saturday, October 10th, from 12:00 to 12:30. I entertain a motion to approve both these special events.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second for both the events. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing, which is scheduled for 7:30, so we will have to hold off on that and move on to our business. So we're now, Jennifer is here, an hour in advance expecting us to be early, after we held you late for two hours last time. Maybe this will be... Here's another piece from Heather, if you'd like her to comment on that, though. Just that we do have the valuation, and I'll read out loud. According to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30b, Section 8, this is from Tricia Favouli, "You may rely on the municipal assessment of the property's value if it is current, if the municipality is assessed at 100%, and if the assessment is determined through valid procedures." The zero Spring Bars Road assessment is current. Falmouth assesses at 100%, and the value is determined using the methods governed by the Department of Revenue and the Department of Local Services. The current assessed value of zero Spring Bars Road is $507,800. There are 11.29 acres of undeveloped app lands and 5,000 square feet of wetlands. And so that's the official announcement of valuation of that property. So we're now going to discuss the adoption of our fiscal year 2017 operating budget policy. Ms. Petit.
Good evening, thank you. In your packet, there was a operating budget policy for fiscal 2017, which would look familiar. We have, it's in the same type of format. We've had every year a few changes. We took out the calculations, and really just came up with a 2.3% recommendation for a budget increase. And how I came about with that is, last year, it's always been around 2.29, 2.28 with, you know, that calculation. But our budget is approximately $120 million. 90 million of that is supported by the tax levy, and that tax levy can grow 2.5% every year. And with the new growth, it comes to about 2.3. So just to make it a little bit easier, give us a little bit more flexibility, you know, when we present a budget to you, the main goal would be within the strategic plan of the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, if there's an increase in the monetary amount of services that we already provide. And also, for the first time, what I've also presented with your budget policy is a five-year budget projection. Gives everybody a little bit more of an idea of, you know, what we're looking at in the next five years. Remember, this is a budget projection. It's flexible and it's fluid. It just really kind of looks at some increases, and when you're ready, I can walk you through that a little bit of some of the assumptions that I've made. I want to proceed with this.
One thing I would just want to clarify, because I know there has been some discussion. Well, the 2.25% is what is allowed. I think every year, we do ask the question, is it something we do need to do from year to year, not automatically assume it's something we're going to. And I know we've already had that process of looking at that, saying, next year is just something, given the cost, the rising costs we have, that say, we are still stuck in that position where we just do need to do that next year.
Yes, that's correct. I believe that's true.
Questions for Ms. Petit? Would you want to go item by item, or which exactly, how would you like to go through this process?
I'll just start him by item. Well, I have a question.
Great.
For starters, on the property taxes.
All right, so we're looking at the budget projection?
I'm looking, yeah, for projections. I think your budget statement was very, very I think your budget statement was very, very good, and I think it's very helpful to us to have that, because we do need to understand what the guidelines are, and it's very similar to last year's, but I realize that. And I don't think there were any significant changes to it.
No.
I didn't see any.
There really isn't. It gives you a little bit more detail on the reserves and, you know, how we look, you know, we'll fund the reserves.
I do appreciate the conservative approach we're taking on level funding the things that we just cannot predict, like the estimated receipts, like the state revenue saying, you know, we're going to assume those are going to stay level, even though they may go up a little bit. But I think to assume they're going to go up would be very dangerous, and so I appreciate that we're staying conservative in that way.
Well, considering what I just read in the paper the other day, the state income isn't as great as some may have thought, although maybe in some areas it has increased. But overall, we're not seeing any significant increase in state revenue, so I think it's fair to assume that things may stay the same, as opposed to getting any kind of a windfall.
And I just want to add a little bit to that. It's so early. I mean, we're looking at FY '17, and it's the beginning of October, and things, you know, things change. So we're always keeping an eye on that. And if there was ever a change, or we felt that we wanted to recommend a change in the adopted budget policy, we need to bring it back to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, it seems sort of inappropriate in a certain sense, that we would be looking at a budget in October, when we're only, what, three months into the fiscal year. But I know that's how it works, and we just do our best every year. I did have a couple, I just wanted to suggest that maybe on page four, under, I'm just going to say, I think you should take a look at DPW wastewater and the expense line. And on the next page, the beach department. The numbers didn't quite add up. And I mean, I know it's probably just not that significant, but I thought you might want to look at them, just to be sure that they're, that they're what you expect them to be.
The projection?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you want, I can address a little bit how I did do the projection. I might be able to answer some questions. Looking at salaries in FY '17, we, the majority of our contracts are settled at a 2%. So I did put a 2% in there for FY '17, and '18 and out, I've put 1.5%. We really don't know, but I wanted to, you know, be conservative for the salaries. Also, on some of the expenses, I did put in some expense. Most of the, let me just state that, most of the budgets for the expenses I kept level, because if you put in an escalator for expenses, it just really takes the projection and really puts it in a real budget deficit that really won't happen. So it's kind of hard to do an across-the-board expense projection. But if, I went down department by department and really looked at some of the issues. For one, water, the water department, as you know, we're building the water filtration plant right now. And once that's up and online, we will have an increase in staff and also in expenses with chemicals and also the electricity. So I put that in there with wastewater. I did put an additional person or two in the expense, in the salary line item, and did increase their expenses a little bit. With the beach department, their expenses I did keep level. We haven't really had to increase them in the past years. But for now, if they do need, you know, we do look at this every year. We meet with department heads, and if we do have an increase, you know, we always definitely take that into consideration. The two departments that I did put a 1% increase in the expense line item only was police and fire, because they're such a large department, and it seems like their needs change every year, trying to keep up with, you know, technology and things of that nature. So I did put a, an escalator in that. That was really how I approached it. You know, we all talked about the DPW, the rubbish contract a couple weeks ago, so we have that in FY '17. Don't have it in '16, because we haven't funded that yet. You will see an article at town meeting to fund that shortfall. And so it really is just, like the capital facility plan, when I presented it, when we had the debt drop-off and you have the window of opportunity, it's a plan. This is a plan. It gives us an idea. It makes me look, you know, three to five years out, really what we are looking at. As you can see, the MSBA reimbursement decreases. This is a really good document to manage the levy. We want to, you know, if we, if the Board so chooses to continue to take the 2.5 levy capacity, what this document does is it helps us manage our debt drop-off. What's our debt? Because these are actual debt numbers, and also the other available funds that's supporting that. And you'll see it under property taxes, your estimated excluded short-term debt payoff. You know, I have from 2.4 million in FY '16 to 3 million in '21, and that's what we would use. So it is a good document, you know, to update every year. It's something I've been doing and looking at, and wanted to share, you know, with the board and publicly, just to let everybody know. From what we know right now, here are some factors. Another thing I wanted to mention, in FY '21, you will see a little bit of a difference with golf revenue. We've talked about that.
I think the specific point that Ms. Flynn was talking about is under the beach department.
That's right.
Future years, the beach nourishment hasn't been carried over into the total.
Oh, okay. So there was a formula? It wasn't the projection?
Right. It was just that
No, it wasn't.
The $25,000 isn't added into
Oh, okay.
the years for '17, '18, '19, '20.
Oh, all right.
That, that total doesn't add, I think that's the point you're saying, is that total
It doesn't, it doesn't.
add up.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Because that $25,000 is not included in the total.
I had a number, whatever.
Thanks for
I'll fix that. Thank you.
I didn't get to that, that part of it.
And did you have some pressure on the wastewater, was that?
I did want to mention on wastewater, though. Page, what is it?
Four?
Page four. It's the salaries. The salaries increased considerably from '16 to '17.
Right.
And I guess that's because of the additional people that we need. Is that
That is correct.
The salaries, okay. That's what I thought.
Mr. Patterson, you have some questions?
Yeah, I just need a translation on page one, under state aid. You have school aid. I assume it's chapter 70. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
And also, I'd like to point out, actually, Mr. Patterson had mentioned this earlier. I do not have a money amount in there for school lunch. The cherry sheet does not have, what the state aid that we get, does not have an amount for school lunch. But I will let you know, the money that comes in for school lunch, you see it come in, and then you would see it on page five go out. So it really is a wash and wouldn't affect this document. But I just wanted to mention that, for some reason, it's not on the cherry sheet. Something I have to look into. They might be reimbursing us a little bit differently.
Any other questions?
My question.
Very clear, and thank you very much. We should have a vote on moving it.
Okay, maybe I can just a comment to say that I really respect the way Jennifer Petit is actually managing the monies of the town. It's done, I think cautiously. I'd rather use that than conservatively, but realistically. And I have had the opportunity to talk to her about the budget on a couple of occasions, and have the highest confidence in her ability to keep us informed and keep things managed well. So thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I retain a motion to approve. The operating budget policy has been presented by the Finance Director.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The ayes have it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next item is to have some interviews for appointment of committees. I'm aware that since we are a little ahead of schedule, we may not have some of these people here. So the first is for the Water Quality Management Committee. Do we have Matthew Charette and Jessica Lambert here? Are either one of those two here yet? All right, we'll hold off on that one.
It's quite early.
How about for the Conservation Commission, Kristen Alexander? Did I skip that one?
Actually, I think so.
All right. The Community Preservation Committee.
That green?
That was for Donald Terry or Kate Jackson. We have Kate here. Before we actually hold that interview, I do want to have a little bit of discussion on the board on this issue, that we do have one resignation effective on November 12th, 2015. I'm not sure we can actually act on a resignation until it is effective, because the resignation can be withdrawn. We have to actually get it posted as an opening before we can then appoint someone to replace them. That, I don't think we can bypass the process, that if someone resigns, we have to declare this an opening, have it open for 30 days, post it in the paper, and then advertise and have the hearing. So I don't think that we are actually available to appoint two people tonight to this board, to the committee. We do have one vacancy that does go until June 30th, 2017. And there's very high level expectation, we'll have another one. But I just want to get some clarity as to whether we should interview both, even though we can only appoint one tonight. We really can't then not re-interview. We'd have to sort of reopen it for the next time.
But there are two alternate positions.
For the CPC?
Has two alternate, oh, we took CPC.
CPC.
I thought you were Conservation.
Yes, sorry about that.
Well, but I think we have to interview both of them and pick one, right?
Aye. And I think unfortunately, if we, if the second one wants to apply when the other opening comes up, we will have to technically go through the interview process again and consider them at that point. And I just, in advance, before we even go through the process, apologize that that's sort of the way the system does work, and that we can't bypass it because of this resignation in the future coming forward.
That's right.
Well, why don't we go ahead and have the interview of the person we have here? And after that, we'll probably be able to move on to our hearing. So Kate Jackson is here to apply for the Community Preservation Committee. If you'd step forward to the podium, introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit why you want to be on the CPC, and then we'll have two or three questions that we'll ask you.
Okay. I'm Kate Jackson, and I appreciate being here. Thank you. I'm very thrilled to have the opportunity to be a part of the CPC, and I would very much like to have that, that open slot that's available now. We just moved to Falmouth year-round. I've been coming here since 1980, off and on. But we now live here permanently, and I love Falmouth. I love everything about it, and I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to help enhance it, be on a committee that's enhancing all aspects of the town. And I'm familiar with the CPC. I lived in Lexington. We had this Community Preservation Fund there, and I worked for the Historical Society there as a volunteer, as well as staff. And I worked at the public school as staff, so I have a sense of, of town and being involved in town. And I just want to continue that here. We're, we're now on permanently home.
Questions from the board?
Ms. Moffitt?
I think that when we read an application and we get a feeling about you, or whoever it might be, there's always kind of, maybe in my mind, an attitude develops that this is a good person for this position. And I think with yours, it's the fact that you have been on a CPC, and you know the work, because that would be my question. Do you realize how much work it is? And that would be, and also, my question to kind of follow that up, and you've answered it a little bit, is how much do you know about Falmouth? And I think that when people are coming on committees, and they're new to town, and do they really know how Falmouth has such a wonderful volunteer organization all over the town? And to be part of that, it seems as if maybe your background is fitting into that. So to make that long statement into a question, do you understand how much work it is and the commitment to it?
I, I would like to think I understand that, having worked at the Historical Society and understanding, not only as a volunteer, but a staff, how much time and energy it takes to, to volunteer and be on a committee and helping. And I've been on various committees, not just town committees, but whether it's at church or at school or whatever. And personally, I find that incredibly gratifying. That's, that's why I was so excited to see this, was that's what makes me tick. That's what gets me excited, is, that's where I like to put my time and energy. I'm very lucky that I no longer have to work full-time. And so to be able to pursue something that I feel passionate about and then genuinely interested in, that to me is, is great. It's not a, like, oh, all this time. It's like, look what we're doing, you know? It's cool. And it's, and it's where we live. You know, it's, it's the best of both worlds, as far as I know, so.
Well, you answered several other questions or thoughts that I had. So, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Questions?
Sam?
The Community Preservation Committee requires members to be liaisons to each of the projects.
Yes.
And so you've got four areas, right?
Yeah.
Conservation, Recreation, Fortable Housing, and Historic Preservation.
Yes.
Of those four areas, which ones would be the projects you would want to be part of? And why do you have that predisposition?
Well, I think probably my immediate reaction would be Historic Preservation, just because I've always been fascinated. I thought I was a history major in college, and I just, I'm fascinated with, like, it makes me sad. I love imagining how the town used to be and to be able to have part of that continue on and have people know where we came from. I think, I love that. But I also am a huge fan of outdoor and recreation and making sure everybody has access to recreation, that it isn't just a few, that, that it's a town thing. I think we're all pretty proud of this amazing, the natural land and stuff. So I would say that those are my two strong interests. But if I was told that I was needed elsewhere, I'll do, I'll do what the chairman says. Those would be my passions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, no.
Sam stole my question, so.
Yes.
It was a good one. All right. Well, thank you very much. We will have a long interview for Mr. Terry also, and make a decision this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any chance that Donald Terry walked in while we were?
No.
Okay. And the other committee was the Recreation Committee.
Right.
And do we either have William Scribner or Philip Pofonzo here yet? Okay, and you are?
Philip Pofonzo.
Philip Pofonzo. If you'd just introduce yourself, please, and tell us a little bit why you'd like to be on the Recreation Committee. We do have another applicant, and we do have two vacancies, both terms ending June 30th, 2018.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Philip Pofonzo, precinct nine. Over the last year, I've wanted to become more involved with town politics. I was raised by just my mom, and I was able to take advantage of a lot of, a lot of sports through the rec center, summer camp. I was able to get scholarships, that sort of thing. The last five years, I've dedicated to Falmouth Pop Warner, the Upper Cape Spartans, heavily involved. And I just, I'd like to get, take that next sort of step. I feel by making this step and being on the committee, it's a great way to, to pay back and pay it forward.
Questions?
Well, considering all the time you have spent in recreation over the years, how would you say that you would want to continue it in this particular format by being on the committee? And what do you expect that you could accomplish?
I just would like to give sort of a breath of fresh air. You know, I've, I've heard from some senior citizens. I've heard from some people my age with little littles. I have four children, ranging from 15 to four. They do every single rec sport, plus some travel sports. There's a sort of an unheard sort of voice that, that I would like to sort of represent. You know, some of our senior folks, they would like to have some sort of activities that don't consist of the normal. I mean, a little bit of out-of-the-box thinking. Some of our younger kids, I mean, it'd be great if we had more of a variety during, like, school vacations, for example. I have a lot of great ideas that I think could be really beneficial, and I just kind of want to give it a shot.
Ms. Moffitt?
Have you gone to any of the Recreation Department committee meetings? Have you attended any, or spoken to anyone that's on the committee?
No, ma'am, I have not.
You're just out there by yourself.
I certainly am. I saw online that the applications had to be submitted by September, and I just, I really wanted to throw my hat in there. and I just, I really wanted to throw my hat in there. I do have, I, I work for a host of companies, and I'm out of work between four and five every day. I usually do somewhere like 40 to 60 hours a week, depending on how busy the, the time of year is. I, I just, I really think the way we're looking at social media and seeing GoFundMe pages for people with addiction and how that trend is sort of setting, it's a lot easier to, the Sheriff's Department has a great slogan, "It's easier to build children than rebuild men." It makes a lot of sense, when, I love my, my, my kids' friends, I mean, I'm like a big kid when I get to play with my kids, so when you have that sort of involvement, I believe, like, it, it sets a trend, you know, when you make a child or a kid feel important from down here, by the time they get up here, it's amazing.
What programs do you remember as a youngster sticking with you as being the, you know, the important ones or the ones that mattered the most to you?
I love summer camp at the rec department. All the trips we'd go on, the activities we would do at the rec center, it meant a lot. My mom cleaned houses, and she did the best she could, my mom's amazing, I mean, she's literally superwoman, so, of course, I'm the son of. T-ball was great, baseball was great, rec soccer, I mean, my, my daughter and son, my daughter's eight, my son is four, you know, I get to watch them at rec soccer right now, one in the heights, one over in the trotting park fields. My son, my middle son is on U-11, Upper Cape Spartan football, and I'm an assistant coach there. I was on the board for Falmouth Pop Warner, one of the founding families of Upper Cape Spartans. I run the parade float sort of organization, I don't know if you've seen the Spartan float in the last couple of years. It's, it's fun, it's fun, and by being involved with the rec committee, I hope to be able to bring some of my ideas and make it fun for the next ones coming up.
Ms. Flynn, you have a question? Mr. Patterson?
I'll wait, and then I have another one.
Okay. What do you think is the role of coaches in these recreation programs?
What is the role of a coach?
Yeah.
So, more than anything, a mentor, I sort of believe. The one thing that I make very clear to all my kids, and so it's daily said at my house, you can ask my four-year-old to finish a sentence if you ask him every action. As a reaction daddy. So, my actions, my kids that I'm coaching see. So if I make the wrong choice, I explain to them, we have free will, everybody can make right or wrong choices, it's up to you to make the right ones. I take coaching very seriously, I take it just as serious as, as being a dad. I think a lot of people sometimes, not a lot of people, but there are some coaches that do it either for themselves to relive their glory days, or for whatever reason. I do it for the fun, and I, I really believe that coaching has a huge impact on kids.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just checking to see if any of the other people there we're interviewing have shown up, either Donald Terry, William Scribner, Matthew Charette, Jessica Lambert, Kristen Alexander.
We're running quite early.
Yeah. It's one of the
How many times have we run early?
The rest that we have is dealing with our articles for our petition, for our town meeting, and I don't feel appropriate that we shouldn't move on to those until it comes after the hearing, we've scheduled for 7:30, and I think some people are planning on that being part of the schedule.
Is there anyone in the hall for an update, for an interview?
I notice we do have a
We could ask for Mr. Afonso, I could talk more about recreation. I have a couple of more questions.
You want to take a five-minute break, or do you have any questions?
Yeah, well.
Would you like to go back up? No, that's fine, that's fine, that's okay. I, I know we do have the, I actually, let's take a five-minute break, you can go back at 7:30.
Okay, that's good.
We're going to have a five-minute recess, and we'll, we can be at 7:30.
Okay.